I want to call it to order, tonight's special committee of the whole. First order of business is roll call.
Ariza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Beefer.
Here.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman, absent. Iazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
All right. And I'm sure there's a reminder to speak into the microphone. We are recording on BATV. And then number three, any items to be removed, added, or changed? Anything from staff? Okay. Moving on to number four, matters from the public. Is there anything anyone would like to discuss? Items that are not on tonight's agenda? Moving on to item number five, it's a discussion. This is regarding the Illinois House Bill 5021. It's the Electric Utility Planning and Transparency Act. Turn it over to Ms. Home.
As Alderman Chantet just indicated, tonight's discussion is regarding a House bill that has been introduced in Springfield. A corresponding Senate bill has also been introduced. I've gone through the House bill and prepared a summary for city council, seven pages long. I'm not planning to go through seven pages in detail tonight. It's really more of a discussion this evening. But I did want to point out a few things. Last year, or earlier this year, city council approved the strategic plan that includes a goal to complete an energy infrastructure study and plan. And going forward, city council will determine appropriate funding levels for development of that plan and implementation of that plan. City council will determine what aspects of that plan should be prioritized and what should be delayed to future years. And city council will determine when and if new planning efforts are undertaken. Under House bill, all of that would have to be run past the state of Illinois. You wouldn't determine that anymore. Well, you would determine it, but you'd have to ask for permission from the state of Illinois. They would be providing oversight of planning efforts. During the SEJA legislation process, city council publicly committed to 100% carbon-free generation resources by the year 2050. Council debated that, and although it certainly wasn't a unanimous vote, a majority of the members determined that the 2050 timeline was the best timeline for Batavia's citizens. In 2022, council again spent considerable time debating and discussing policies related to customer self-generation. Again, not a unanimous vote, but again, a majority of council members agreeing that the policies that we developed were best for Batavia's citizens. And just this past December, city council as a whole had a discussion on electrification and Batavia's electric loads and what our load forecasts were and resource planning. And again, those discussions, all at city's councils level, without having to go to the state of Illinois to ask for permission or approvals. Today, you have that authority to manage and come up with your own policies and implement new policies that you feel are in the best interest of the citizens. Staff just does not see a need for state oversight of the policies and what you feel is best for the citizens. You are elected by 26,000 people in this town. You are the CEO and board of directors for our utility. Tonight, undoubtedly, residents are going to come up and have a direct voice to the CEO and the board of our utility. I would challenge those residents to go down to the Illinois Power Authority, and yeah, they may be able to speak before the power authority, but the power authority is going to say, who are these folks and where is Batavia and why do I care about them? Unlike you, you guys all live here and you're elected by people who live here. And you, the citizens, have a direct voice to you without having oversight by the state of Illinois. Transparency, I don't know who, how we can't hold ourselves up as an example to everyone else to follow, or, I mean, again, we'll have a, you guys have a direct voice, everything we put out is public. That's how a representative republic is supposed to work, is the citizens are supposed to provide you with feedback, you as elected officials are then supposed to decide on policy. Now, you may decide on policy that not all citizens like. And just because you decide on a policy that citizens don't like doesn't mean you're not being transparent, or it doesn't mean you're not being accountable. It just means that you're representing how you best think you should be representing. And that theme came up a lot during the last summer's meetings in Naperville and St. Charles. And more than once, it came up that, you know, they need to listen to us, you know, the people in the audience, and if they don't listen to us, they're not being transparent. And that, that was literally stated by Mr. Scott Allen from the Citizens Utility Board. And that's just not how a representative republic works. He made it clear, Mr. Allen did, during those two meetings in Naperville and St. Charles, that the people in control, people who are in control of power planning have the power. And basically, he said, you know, the people in the room, they want the power, so they want to be in control of power planning, not you. That, that was essentially the gist of his, of his presentations, both in Naperville and in St. Charles. And I went through, again, I'm not going to go through seven pages of memo tonight. It is on our website, and council members have had it to read through. So I'm going to turn it over if anyone has any questions or discussion to get it started.
Thank you. I guess we, get started, I guess I would ask this question. At the end of this meeting, are you looking for direction to staff to make a decision? Or tonight, we're discussing, just so we can spitball and understand, get our arms around it? Would you prefer direction tonight, or would you prefer this to be an introductory discussion?
Ultimately, you're going to have to give the direction to state legislators as a city council. If you feel that you are in a position to do a straw poll, it'd be great if I had some direction going forward. I mean, I've got an NIMPA meeting coming up, coming up on Thursday, so, but that's up to you. You guys need to decide, have you reached a point where you're willing to, or willing and able to do a straw poll? And then you need to decide what your next steps are with our state legislators.
We would give you more strength if we were your foot soldiers and made phone calls to our representatives as electives, and you hit the nail on the head. Batavia is lucky because we have 14 of us. It is among one of the most direct, because the, the, the most amount of representation per resident you see with, with this table here. I have 3,400 residents in my, in my ward, and it's, what is it that's me for 3,400? It's one state rep for every, what, 600,000 or something like that? So to go down and to Springfield and ask a government body to do something, they will say, who are you? When we go down there as Metro West, we represent almost a million voters. So you're, you're absolutely right on that. Also, are you looking for a resolution from us tonight? Will that give you more strength?
I don't know that we need to take it to the step of a formal resolution unless council thinks that. And again, I'll point to Laura. Laura is very, 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 very good at interacting with our state legislators and serving as that conduit. So if council wants to give her direction and have her communicate to state legislators, that's also an avenue for communications.
It, it seems silly, but if we have to get together and say, we would like to maintain local control if that's what we decide here, then we should probably prepare a resolution like that. It seems silly to do that, but.
I think, and I will also have conversation with our legislative consultant as well about it in terms of the timing. Right now, this legislation sits in the Rules Committee, which is, you know, means nothing much is happening. Should it be sent to a committee that is going to debate it, the timing might be better to do that at that point. But I'll, I'll submit that question to our legislative consultant.
And it's entirely possible that we're spinning our wheels tonight because one of them might die in committee anyways, and it will never actually complete the process.
Yes, Alderman, but I would say it is vitally important that we still have these conversations because this is the second year in a row now that this very topic has come up. And if it dies in committee this year, I'd put a pretty big bet on the fact that it may come up again next year.
Thank you. Okay. I guess I will turn it to council.
So the question, and you might not know this answer, Gary, because obviously, all the communities that purchase their, are in agreements with, or not Pleasant Prairie, thinking Prairie State, thank you, aren't necessarily in the state of Illinois. So for those communities that are in other states, do those states have this type of regulation where they have to go to those state bodies to request any decisions that they make on the purchasing of the power that they do?
I don't know the answer to that, but I also don't know that there's a connection to Prairie State. I mean, this is a transparency bill and a resource planning bill and renewable portfolio standards bill. There's nothing in here about Prairie State or discontinuation of generation related Prairie State. I don't know what other states and how their processes work.
Okay, but it has to deal with being able to make decisions on how you purchase your energy for your community, correct?
So the, the, the larger answer to your question in real broad pictures is this is the municipal model, the public power model, is for local control. Now, I know that in Wisconsin, they have, they have some public board in Wisconsin, and I'm over my skis on, on, on how that works up there, but it's a, it's a, it's a whole infrastructure of public utilities in Wisconsin that all, it's not, it's not like the same here. We have the ICC, which overlooks the IOUs, ComEd and Ameren. And in Wisconsin, they have an oversight, but it's, it's a known separate category on the municipal side.
In your opinion, what, I mean, why are they doing this? It's for, obviously for power, for oversight, whatever, but are they getting a monetary advantage to this? I mean, the, the states, sorry, I mean, beg, what, I mean, in your opinion, I guess, it's totally.
Being driven by the state of Illinois. The supporters of this bill, I mean, based on the meetings in Naperville and St. Charles, the supporters of this bill, I mean, one of the words Mr. Allen said was that transparency has become a fallacy amongst municipal utilities, IMEA and NIMPA. That, that's their feeling, that we are no longer transparent, and that they need to take the power out of our hands and give it to the state of Illinois. So I don't know that the state of Illinois is driving this.
Right, no, I understand, yep, okay, thanks.
Gary, is Allen.
Yes, sir.
Do we know yet, does, has the IML looked at this, or the Illinois Public Power Association? I mean, are they going to come out against this as well?
I spoke with Brad Cole at IML, and they are going to come out opposed.
Okay, because I think we should, we should be ready to be in that, that position to send off a letter to the legislators, to put out a phone list so we can call, and, you know, an emails notice, whether this comes up this year, next year, whatever. I think we should be prepared and ready that we're going to come out and oppose this along with other partners that we have, so we can work against the state to pass, to not pass this, so that this does not get passed.
That's all we can do at this point, right? Is.
Just be prepared.
Steps at this point, yes.
It is, and then should it end up in a committee where there are hearings, then I'll send out the instructions about filing witness slips as well.
You don't actually have to physically go to the committee meetings, and as we learn from our drive downs, it doesn't matter sometimes if you're there.
And there will be a drive down. Laura, help me, that happens in the spring. I'm not sure what.
I think it's April 17th this year.
Okay. And from what we've been told, not much is going to happen in Springfield prior to the primaries. I think the primary is March 19th. After the primary, there'll be a sprint then for about six to eight weeks until the end of the May session. Between now and March 19th, probably not a whole lot's going to go on.
Playing devil's advocate, let's say we decide we want to surrender local control. Let's just say that we did make that decision. What authority are we really giving up? And when I say what, what authority are we giving up, what can we ask for in return? Because it would occur to me that if I'm giving up control over driving my car, and I say, some, something else is going to drive it for me, I shouldn't be responsible for what the car does, because I'm no longer driving the car. Does that mean I can ask for financial relief? Because that might actually be attractive. If they take away our control, they should take away our bills.
But let me be very clear.
Guarantee the state ain't going to do that.
I'm, I'm being facetious, but I'm also not.
I, I get it. And you are, you are, be very clear, you are still going to develop a plan. You're basically being told by the state of Illinois, you have to develop a plan every three years, and, but you will still develop the plan. The plan will still be Batavia's plan. You're just going to give it to the state of Illinois, and the state of Illinois is going to review it and say, we don't like this, change this, we don't like that, change that, we agree with that, that's good, therefore, give it the blessing. That's the whole step you don't have to do today. So it is still your plan, but you now have to run it past somebody to get their approval. So you're not giving up total control of the car, because you're still going to create that plan. You just have to ask for the keys on a Friday night, you know, from your parents, as opposed to be able to just be able to go out and drive that car on your own.
Couldn't have been any more clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Much easier with the parents than it is with the state.
Fair.
I would liken it, when we work on a road project and we have to have IDOT approval at every step. And the other one would be just working on a municipal street anywhere in the city, and we have a plan, we have our engineers take care of it, plan it out, we, we bid it out and we do it, and it's over with. Every time IDOT gets involved, it's a year or two longer.
Agreed. Your honor, is there any remarks?
Yeah, I, as all of you know, I have an office in Chicago at the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. I'm chairman of the council, mayor's in there. And so as a result, I get to be part of some conversations kind of off the record of things that are being said by lobbyists and whatever have you. And the thing I've heard is, the conventional wisdom is, is that 2024 in Springfield is going to turn into a non-legal year. In other words, right now, nobody wants to do nothing before the primary, and after the primary is over, you got the general election. And the general election then kicks in, and that takes you through November, or first of November, and then you get ready to go to holidays. So I've had several lobbyists in there tell me, well, you know, don't get excited about too much here, because the way this is all going to work down there, there's a lot of politics going to be flying around here after, we're going to start it here with the primary, but then it's really going to get heavy between the national candidates and everything else that's flying. And all those who will be voting on all this are going to be wanting to be someplace else, and we're going to have the Democratic Convention in Chicago and the Republican Convention in Milwaukee. So it's all going to be, a lot of the world is going to politically be on our doorstep here in the next few months. And as a result, all this politics here, we've probably got more politics here than we've ever had before, and that's going to cloud this whole thing up, and that this bill or any of the others that we're talking about is probably not going anyplace in 2024. And there's a proposal in, another one that's down in Springfield is, is that the city of Chicago and the CTA have got a bill that they've introduced in which they want to defrock the RTA and get rid of Metra and PACE and the CTA and create a whole new agency. And there's a lot of supposition as to why that wants to be done, but I've been told by several people, well, that ain't going to happen, because you've got no answer in this bill that they've put in that says, how it's going to be run. Once you collapse them all, it doesn't say, who's, is there a new board? There has to be somebody like a new RTA board created. Who's going to be on that? Who's going to appoint it? You know, there's all these questions that are not answered in this legislation. So they said, there's a lot of these bills, and they mentioned this one is another one that's, you know, there's, another one is water, is to, you know, where's everybody getting their water from? And Batavia's very fortunate, I think we've made the decisions over the years on water, what we're doing, and we're right now, I think, in a very good position. And we're not looking at having to spend $90 million a year to move pipes through DuPage County to get Lake Michigan water to us. So there's just a lot of moving parts here, but this is one I, hopefully, I would tell you, I wouldn't get really excited about it, maybe a year from now, in 2025, when there's not a, a whole political contest in front of you. But the predictions by those who kind of watch this with great interest say that this is about to be one of the political, biggest political game shows you've ever wanted to see in the history of the United States of America. And it's going to be at several different levels, starting with the president and going down to senators and governors and everything else. There's going to be all kinds of political gameship going on, and the last thing that any of these people want to do is get themselves into approving legislation.
With that, if there's no objections, I guess I would open up to questions from the public.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Does anyone, the president want to address the council with questions or comments? If so, please come over to the podium and state your name.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. It is hard to see people. Susan Russo. City staff has issued a memo describing House Bill 5021 in alarming terms. This memo concludes by saying that staff recommends that city council oppose House Bill 5021. But when developing your independent position on this bill, you need to ask three critical questions, and also consider the positive goals that House Bill 5021 will accomplish. The first question is, have you read House Bill 5021? The memo includes a link to the bill. Upon reading House Bill 5021, you will find that most of the memo statements made against the bill are misleading. For example, there is absolutely nothing in House Bill 5021 that, quote, strips authority from local mayors and city councils and transfers that authority to the state of Illinois, end quote. In a second example, staff says that, quote, "House Bill 5021 will impose oversight of Batavia's authority by the Illinois Commerce Commission," end quote. In pointed contrast to this statement, the bill's amendment to Public Utilities Act actually leaves intact the current language in the act. That act says, "The Illinois Commerce Commission, or any other agency or subdivision thereof of the state of Illinois, or any private entity, shall have no jurisdiction over any municipal system." I ask each of you to read House Bill 5021 for yourselves. You will find other examples that prove that House Bill 5021 does not say the things that staff is claiming it to say. The second question is, how can the proposed bill be improved? House Bill 5021 will be subject to public hearings, negotiations, and amendments before it is passed. However, city staff treats this bill as though it is already a law. Contrast this position to comments frequently and regularly made by city staff taking the opposite view regarding actual laws. Just last Friday, I got a message from Mr. Home defending NIMPA's failure to plan for Prairie State's partial closure in 2038, because by 2038, quote, "It is not unreasonable to assume that many different versions of energy bills modifying SEJA will be considered and passed through Springfield," end quote. On the positive side, city staff has a valid concern about the Integrated Resource Plan process and its associated costs. Right now, House Bill 5021 will allow the 32 IMEA members to avoid the costs of preparing 32 individual integrated resource plans by adopting IMEA's plan. Because NIMPA is a project-based agency, not a full requirements agency like IMEA, the current language wouldn't allow NIMPA's three members the opportunity to adopt NIMPA's plan. But this language in House Bill 5021 can be changed. As I will explain in a moment, there are many reasons why the Integrated Resource Plan process is good for Batavia. City staff ignores these positive benefits and simply advocates for throwing out the whole Integrated Resource Plan process. Instead, all of us in Batavia, including city staff, should be supporting amendments to House Bill 5021 that will make resource planning opportunities attractive to Batavia, Geneva, and Rochelle. The last question is, who is staff representing? I submit that the positions in the memo protect NIMPA, not Batavia citizens, and not you, our elected representatives. A clear example of this relates to the multi-paragraph description of how transparent the Batavia city government is. To my knowledge, no one is accusing the mayor, any of you on city council, or city staff of failing to comply with the requirements of good governance. However, citizens across Illinois, with good reason, have accused IMEA and NIMPA of failing to conduct their business in an open and transparent manner. Not only does NIMPA slam the door shut on Batavia citizens, but it also slams the door shut on you, the city council members who represent Batavia citizens. It is important to also examine the positive outcomes of House Bill 5021. First and foremost are the amendments to the Open Meetings Act. The current exception to open meetings allows IMEA and NIMPA to go into closed session to discuss and make decisions about anything related to existing contracts. The proposed amendment will restrict the use of closed meetings to the discussion of trade secrets, contract negotiations, and matters already prohibited from disclosure by federal and state law. This amendment will simply require electric agencies like IMEA and NIMPA to follow the same rule followed by every other Illinois public body. Matters related to approved contracts must be discussed and voted on in open session. When NIMPA signed the Prairie State Participation Agreement, did NIMPA inform city council members and Batavia citizens that the confidentiality clause in that agreement would require Batavia to forever sign away the rights of Batavia citizens and ratepayers to publicly know how dollars are being spent at Prairie State? The hallowed right of Batavia to solely govern its own municipal electric utility, as repeatedly referenced in the staff memo, was long ago transferred to Prairie State Generating Company, a private entity that hides how the public's dollars are being spent on government business. This same confidentiality clause forces each of you to sign a confidentiality and nondisclosure agreement. This in its, in and of itself is outrageous, but more outrageous are the, its consequences. Even if city council is provided with information about Prairie State, none of you can share this information with your constituents. How is this an example of a public power model that has successfully existed in Illinois? Even with the signing of those NDAs, you are not provided with adequate information about the operation of Prairie State and the decisions NIMPA is making on your behalf. As you all know, Prairie State Management Company issued a solicitation of interest to private contractors and financiers for the construction of a carbon capture system at Prairie State. NIMPA never shared this information with city council members, and none of you knew about it until you were told about it by a private citizen. As some of you heard at the January 31 NIMPA public presentation, the NIMPA board will be discussing this Thursday, Jan, excuse me, February 22nd, whether to hire a general manager. This decision is being made at the suggestion of NIMPA's attorney to circumvent NIMPA's obligations under the Open Meetings Act. For years, Illinois residents of IMEA and NIMPA member municipalities have been asking for more information about the agency's operations and the operation of Prairie State. Unfortunately, these requests are usually met with deny and denial. I am one of these many Illinois residents. Just six months ago, NIMPA refused to provide me with a copy of a preliminary report exploring possible options for the closure of Prairie State, cited by. possible options for the closure of Prairie State, cited by NIPA in deciding how much money to set aside to pay for those closure costs. I had to file a request for review with the Illinois Attorney General's Office for NIPA to finally provide me with a copy of that document. Passage of House Bill 5021 will take a giant step forward in shedding light on NIPA's decision-making process and bringing the public back into Batavia public utility. A second positive consequence of House Bill 5021 is the provision requiring public utilities to engage in the Integrated Resource Planning, or IRP, process. The benefits of an IRP process significantly outweigh the particular concerns of Batavia, Geneva, and Rochelle, which I am confident can be addressed with a simple amendment. City staff takes the position that creating a statewide IRP process would impose detrimental involvement and oversight by the Illinois Power Agency. But let's take a look at how proactive Batavia, NIPA, and Prairie State have been in the energy planning process. Several years ago, Prairie State was near the point of operating in the red, and that trend seemed likely to continue. Then came COVID and the Ukraine war. Those events and their economic consequences changed that trend. What evidence is there that NIPA and Prairie State are fulfilling their fiduciary responsibility by watching and analyzing evidence and preparing for a possible return of that trend? What longer-term clean energy alternatives are they considering in how they will continue to use and risk our dollars? The staff memo says that, quote, "The city of Batavia has already committed to a long-term plan to transition to renewable power resources." But this is an aspirational statement. There is no actual plan with data, projections, dates, and targets. House Bill 5021 will require Batavia either alone or through NIPA to regularly engage in a resource planning process. About a week ago, I asked whether NIPA has made or was making plans for replacement energy in 2038 when Prairie State needs to reduce its carbon dioxide emission by 45%. In answer, Mr. Home replied on possible changes to state energy laws, including SEJA, to excuse NIPA from making such plans. He further stated that NIPA is not, quote, "doing anything wrong by not actively engaging in planning for 2038 and beyond." It may not be wrong, but it is irresponsible. House Bill 5021 will require NIPA to make plans in a responsible manner. Under House Bill 5021, municipal utilities and electric agencies are required to hold two meetings open to all ratepayers and members of the public when developing their IRPs. How can anyone argue that engaging ratepayers and members of the public in making decisions about the electricity we will use and pay for is a bad thing? I submit that staff's objections to these provisions are really NIPA's objections. NIPA does not want public input in its deliberations or its decision-making process. Much of the memo expresses outrage at the costs associated with the development of an IRP. And yet, NIPA has already hired a lobbying firm at a cost of $5,000 a month plus expenses starting in May 2023. To date, NIPA has incurred a cost of at least $50,000. Have you been consulted about this expense? Finally, House Bill 5021 benefits over 1 million residents of Illinois, not just Batavia residents. It benefits the citizens of the 32 members of IMEA. It benefits the citizens of the many rural cooperatives in downstate Illinois whose electric agencies are as opaque as NIPA and IMEA. Again, read House Bill 5021 for yourself. Read the access to electric agency records provisions that will give Illinois citizens access to information about their public utilities. Read the conflict of interest disclosure requirements that protect Illinois citizens from possible undue influence. Read the IRP requirements in their entirety and ask yourself, what are the unknown costs of not planning for future energy resources? Please do not blindly follow the recommendation of city staff to object to House Bill 5021. Instead, work with your constituents and our Illinois legislators to remedy its shortcomings and to make it a stronger bill, a bill that will finally put the public back into public utilities. Thank you.
I want to reiterate, if I may. I just want to say, frankly, it's really insulting to have someone say to me that I'm not standing up here tonight to talk about Batavia. The memo was written in the context of Batavia. All of my comments have been in the context of Batavia. Batavia is what puts food on my plate and keeps a roof over my head. Period. Every story needs a villain, and in this story, the villain is NIPA, and it's the big boogie monster out in the corner. I'm here tonight as your director of public works, representing the city of Batavia, and to be told anything other than that is just insulting.
The sponsor on this bill is Janet in Naperville.
I represent Yang Ror.
Has anyone else signed on to the bill?
I don't know. I don't think so.
So that in itself concerns me, that there's only one rep on the bill, and that I can go with a...
Mr. Chan, it is...
The bill was filed one and a half weeks ago. It is brand new. It hasn't even gotten a chance to have anybody co-sign with it.
To your point, you're actually making my point for me. On her website, it gives her email address, her cellphone, and whatnot. I will give the representative a call tomorrow and ask, what's in it for Batavia? I'd be curious how that conversation goes. And I guess I would ask, because it is so soon, because we just had first reading less than a week ago, we don't know where this bill is going. We don't know what words are going to change. Sometimes they're changed at the last minute. Very few bills in my life have I ever watched so closely as the marriage equality bill, and that one was changing up until the very last minute. Pick a bill, whatever bill it is that makes your blood boil, they will change on a dime. And I don't get excited about bills until there are 30 sponsors on them, because it's pretty clear then where the dollars are being spent. We follow the money. It's clear where the influence is, and it's clear whether it's politically feasible or not. This is an introduction of a bill, and I'm not as concerned, because I recognize that the legislative process is slow, and so maybe we don't need to give you a resolution for your Thursday meeting. But this is certainly a bill that we should watch, and we asked you to let us know about the important things that are happening in Springfield. This is an important thing happening in Springfield. I'm not sure if it helps or hurts Batavia right now. It doesn't look like it hurts us. One, it's not a law. But I would make a commitment to follow this, and I guess I would ask the council to make a commitment to follow this and other bills, because there are plenty of things happening in Springfield right now that are equally as important, if not more important, than having to submit a report every three years.
Yeah, several thousand bills have been introduced in Springfield, so.
Alderman Beck has her hand up.
I'm Abby. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks. No, I was, I'm going to reiterate a lot of the things you just said, that I would not feel it appropriate tonight to vote on any sort of direction or resolution. I'll confess that I haven't read the bill yet this weekend like I would like to. So I think in the future, too, if we're asked to weigh in on, you know, giving direction to staff or lobbyists to push for a certain direction, that we do have a full debrief of the full bill. Thank you for your summary, Gary, but I think it would have been appropriate to go through it in conversation tonight. I think it would also be appropriate to always read it first if we're going to vote on a direction for it. So if there was a straw poll taken tonight, I haven't read it, so I would be voting no. Just, I think this was a good first introduction to the topic, but a lot more needs to be discussed before we would give any direction. And if we were going to give direction, I would give direction to work with legislators to actually improve it, not just a black-white binary, we are for it or we are against it, and there's nothing in between.
As far as bills go, it's not very long. It's only about 80 pages.
Yeah, I just downloaded it. Mine said 60, so that's not bad.
Yeah, SEJA was 800 or close to 900, if I recall.
Yeah. Anyone else in the public want to address? Anyone else on the council have anything they'd like to discuss? This is a really useful meeting. I appreciate that you brought this. I would rather spend an hour talking about things like this so we are prepared as things come forward. And if there's any other things happening in Springfield, I would certainly love to hear about them. Anyone else have anything to add, or is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second? All in favor?